I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Motika, can you please lead us in the pledge? I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the July 22, 2024, regular meeting as presented.
Second, Motika.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items 3.02 through 3.10 as presented.
Does that move, Boyko?
Second, Motika.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. 4.01, financial statements. I need a motion and a second to approve the financial statements for June 2024 as presented.
Does that move, Boyko?
Second, Hepburn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our revenues in June were 2.4 million, and I've listed the main sources of revenue for June. Our collection rate for current taxes was 97.5% through June, just slightly under what we ended the previous fiscal year with. In total, our operating revenues were 89.2 million for the fiscal year. That's 1.2 million or 1.3% more than we had projected. And most of this variance resulted from, there are six items that I've listed. Some of the increases include current taxes. Some of the ones that came in better than projected were current taxes, Prop C sales tax, earnings from investments, and state funding. There were a couple that came in under our projections, which were delinquent taxes and financial institutions tax. But again, overall, 1.2 million more than what we had projected. Operating expenses in June were 12.9 million. This includes the teachers' summer paychecks. That's the same that we do every June. We pay out teacher's summer checks at the end of the fiscal year. We also paid $230,000 for the second semester for our school resource officers and $228,000 for the high school turf project. Overall, the operating expenditures for the fiscal year were $85.9 million. That's .6 million more than projected or .1% better than projected. Some of the savings came from our early childhood special ed budget, which was 284,000. Federal grants came in 162,000 less than projected. Now, those funds will carry over into this current fiscal year. And then, school and department expenditures were 149,000 less than projected. Our operating fund balance ended at 38.5 million. That's 1.8 million more than what we had projected. And it's 3.3 million higher than the previous fiscal year. In our activity accounts fund, it decreased $447,000. This is due to some funds that were collected in previous fiscal years. Those carry over from one year to the next, but some of those funds were spent during this past fiscal year. Our maintenance fund decreased 1.2 million. We had projected a decrease of 1.9 million. The reason why it came in better than projected is some of the bids came in less than we had anticipated. We had savings from contingency funds, and then also the interest that we earned on the maintenance fund balance was 245,000 more than what we had projected. Our technology fund increased 189,000 from the previous year. We had projected an increase of 43,000. Our KCC fund balance increased 618,000 from the previous year. We had projected about $300,000 increase. In our Prop I fund, that fund balance decreased 420,000 from the previous year. We had projected $390,000 decrease. Debt service, we increased 194,000, and we had projected an increase of 191,000. In our construction fund, it decreased 24.9 million. That's because we paid, finished paying off the Prop R projects. Now, we still do owe 442,000 on some of them. Some of this is money that we're holding until the project is 100% complete. And one of the mains, one is Nifer. We were doing some band room improvements at Nifer Middle School. That fund ended with a fund balance of $1,630,000. So after we pay the remaining money that we own those projects, the 442,000, we'll still have 621,000 remaining in our Prop R fund to be used for other projects. Our self-funded insurance fund balance decreased 1.1 million from the previous year. This is due to higher claims. We did increase our premium for this current calendar year, so that started in January. And we are planning to increase it again this coming January to help offset rising insurance claims. Thank you.
Just a couple of observations. One, if the board will recall, we did factor those increases in our increase in the insurance into the fiscal '25 budget. The other thing I want to say is, I want to make sure, I know, Ms. Romei, you come and you do these each year. This is unique because we're talking about finishing out the previous fiscal year. This is a really good financial report. And for us to be able to do the things that we've been able to do and do it in such a way that can stand scrutiny and can, we can tell our community we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way, is a big deal. And I don't want that to go unnoted. And so, I feel like I say this every time I have the opportunity, Mike, and I don't want it to ever think like it gets old or it seems insincere. I do not, and I know this board does not, and I know our community does not take your expertise for granted. We have, I got a little piece of good news even today, that we have, we got two grants related to K E C C. One is $100,000 to help with our construction costs, to add the new two, the two new classrooms that are on track as of today. We learned that they are on track to open with the opening of the school year. And then, we got another different grant for $40,000 to help cover that furniture. So that's new even from what was shared with the board to have here. So again, I want to make sure and say thank you to you, Mr. Romei. Because to be able to do the things that we're able to do and be able to do that in a fiscally responsible way is a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. To my left, any questions, Board? Ms. Andrews?
Ms. Pangborn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, oh, sorry. I need, all those in favor to approve the financial statements for June 2024 as presented, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, oh, she passes. 5.01, the final class size report. Dr. Fields, are you going to take it first?
All right. Thank you very much. Again, I want to take the opportunity to say, on my behalf, I'm sure I speak for the board when I say thank you, Dr. Fields, for the details that you provide in helping us plan for the upcoming school year, and most importantly, helping our principals and our teachers plan for the upcoming school year. I'm sure you will emphasize this. I don't want to steal your thunder, but if you'll recall, after this report, we will not collapse any sections. And we have done that really as a result of some of the feedback that we received from the community and the board a year ago. And I know that Dr. Fields will cover very briefly just a review of our new standard operating procedures and what that effect has looked like as it is, as we run through this cycle, getting ready for the upcoming school year. Dr. Fields?
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Ulrich, community, and colleagues. As Dr. Ulrich already alluded to, this is a significant class size and staffing report because of the standard operating procedure, which I will speak to here momentarily. I will start off by going to the slide that does mention the standard operating procedure, which is on Slide 6. And it goes to minimize disruption for students and staff. No sections will be collapsed after the July board meeting, that being today, even if Infinite Campus reflects the decline in students. So what that means is, you will see that there are a number of class sizes where we may in fact be right there in terms of opening up a new section. And in theory, if we were to have five or six or even two students in some regards leave a section, that section will still remain the way that it is. Part of that feedback has been provided by the board over the years. Thank you for that. And as Dr. Ulrich alluded to, for planning purposes, this is something that the principals, as well as the teachers and community, I'm sure, really appreciate. Now, having said that, if in fact there is an incline, we are still going to open sections. That's something that I wanted to make sure we distinguish between the two. We will not collapse any sections after today, but we will open sections if in fact enrollment points to such. So I think that's rather significant. From that, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about our on-deck teachers towards the end. But I do want to give us an update with respect to the various schools. I'll start off with Kaiser. You will see all of the class sections. This is based off of July 16 data occurring to, according to Infinite Campus. Now, anytime you see red in the past that has spoken to sections that are over the class size guidelines, but because of the class size guidelines that we have as of today, the red represents being at that particular class size guideline. Now, as you can notice with Kaiser, we are there, and in theory, one additional student would open up another section. I have been in touch with the principal there, and we actually anticipate that number will go down at least by another student or two. As we go to North Glendale, you will see the red as it relates to third grade. And in theory, if we were to have two additional students, that would result in a fifth section. And again, this is based off of data in terms of Infinite Campus on July the 16th. Same thing with Robinson. You will see red for second grade, but in this case, we are four students away from opening up an additional section. Tillman, you will see no red. And in Westchester, you will see for fourth grade, in theory, if we received four additional students in fourth grade, we would open another section. Although I am bringing your attention to any of the red, we are paying close attention to all sections as we know this time of year enrollment can change rather quickly. This next screenshot is you are accustomed to seeing. It does update the section, so you will see how it's allocated across each of our elementary schools as well as the actual grade level. I was giving us anecdotes in terms of how many students we are away from different sections, but on this particular slide, you will see that that information is provided for you in the last column. And again, that data is per Infinite Campus as of July the 16th. You will see all of the students and update, followed by the secondary. We do have Nifer North, Kirkwood Middle, as well as Kirkwood High School, and all of that information is provided to you. And then, the reminders, as I alluded to, as it relates to on-deck teachers. So moving forward, if in fact a section is added, we will first have to go to our on-deck teachers. We have some individuals that were already in the district, specifically teachers assistants and long-term subs who did have certification. They will go through the new teacher orientation and have preparation. And in the event that they are going to be a classroom teacher, they will be ready as it pertains to that same level of training. Now, if you're wondering, we already have placed one particular on-deck teacher. We have two remaining, and they do have different certifications. And so, in the event we open up a section and that certification applies, then that person would become the on-deck teacher, obviously having conversations with the building administration. Let's just say we need a section and there is no certification for that, then we would just go through the process of interviewing as we have done in the past. And this is just some additional information as it relates to our on-deck teachers. With that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Awesome. I'll start to my right, Ms. Pangborn. Any questions? Ms. Hepburn?
My only question is, at this point with the numbers that we're seeing and the class sections that we're seeing, are there any red flags or concerns or things we need to keep an eye on in terms of space at any of those buildings where there's the possibility of adding a section? Or in those, I know there's only a handful of buildings where we're kind of keeping a close eye on it. Are we good if that happens in those particular buildings?
My favorite response is, it depends. When I say it depends, there are two schools in particular I've had conversations about space. And in the event that they received at least two more classes, they are still okay. Now, given the different personalities of our principals, some are more okay than others. But I have not had any conversations related to concerns with staff with space, with the exception of those two schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Boyko?
Yeah, I've got a question, I guess. Looking at Kaiser, that was right at the line at 100 kids. If we had a situation where one additional student enrolled, so we crossed the threshold, but we still anticipate there might be drops, do we immediately open up another section? Is there sort of a conversation that takes place at that point, or kind of how does that process work?
It's immediate. I mean, we want to be as responsive as possible, not just because of the data that does fluctuate, but for the purposes of trying to grab the best staff we quite possibly would have. And so, I think that's a great example, but as soon as it would open, we would get everything situated in terms of a posting or looking at our on-deck teachers.
And then, I guess the other question is, if we get in a situation where we've now used two of our three on-deck teachers, do we start to try to replenish the bullpen proactively, or would we wait to sort of deploy the last one before we start to hire more?
I think with this being the pilot year, we're learning a few things. Speaking of the bull plan, we have a righty and a lefty, and we have a righty and a standpoint of someone who is birthed through third. And so, if someone, if we needed a section of fourth or fifth grade, then we would obviously have to go out and hire. But we also have someone that does not have the elementary certification they have gifted. And so, those are the pieces that we're looking at. We're getting feedback from both the on-deck teachers as well as our administration. If we were to continue with this pilot, what that would sound and look like. I feel real good about the numbers as it relates to right now. Although I'm presenting to you all once a month, that data comes, if not once, twice a week for principals, so we're constantly having those conversations. Because the bigger piece is making sure we can get highly qualified individuals in front of our students. And so, if you ask me that after we continue with the on-deck piece after school starts, I might have a different response. But as we're looking at the numbers right now, we think we're going to be okay.
Okay. And I do appreciate, I think this is much better in terms of the students and families than what we had been living under, a real improvement. And appreciate the administration's piloting of this way of doing business.
Thank you.
Mr. Kathy? Ms. Andrews?
Can you tell me again, the last date that the numbers were pulled?
July the 16th specifically.
Okay. And Dr. Fields, did any, from July 16th, were any numbers adjusted from that time or changes made?
No, from the, I had pulled them, I think, on the 14th or 13th. There was a slight adjustment. Normally, I will pull them on Mondays and Tuesdays to get ready for the board. Shout out to Laura. She allowed an extension so I can update again Thursday or Friday, because I wanted to make sure with this being the quote-unquote last one before we collapse. We looked at that. I had a lot of conversation with Kaiser specifically about that fifth grade number. And that is where I got the information where we anticipate a few additional drops for fifth grade. So that's typically the process in terms of conversations. But outside of Kaiser, there was nothing noticeable from the standpoint of, oh, my goodness, we need to pause or potentially collapse a section.
Yeah. And so, I think that one of the things that, in looking at the district as a whole, right? Isn't there a, I don't have my slides in front of me. They're not, it's not cooperating. Looking at the district as a whole, there's not much variance between buildings, except in that... Sorry, Dr. Fields. Is that it? Yep. Okay. Let me see. Yeah. Which I think shows that we're kind of making progress. And, because one of the things that I think is difficult is when you look at staff well-being, staff, you know, like what we're asking of our staff, it's difficult for a staff member at one building to have five less kids. That's, that's a lot. And so, I think that this solved that for the most part, but there are areas where there are some varying numbers that are three to five kids. And so, I don't know if there's something else we need to be looking at in terms of that. Because again, I think it all ties into students, staff well-being, and so I don't know if you have thoughts on that?
Absolutely. And then, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ulrich to share if he had anything. I think the great thing about it is also the difficult thing about it, because we're looking at numbers, but those are students, those are teachers. And so, I do empathize in that regard. I think what's difficult when we look at class sizes and we look at the amount of students, it's going to always depend. I mean, we've all been part of the coffer numbers and the fluctuation in one space as opposed to others. And even if the class sizes or what have you would shift, we all remember last year, I still have nightmares about it, about the numbers just did not cooperate with regards to what we have right here. And so, I think it's a very difficult metric to look at. But to your point, Ms. Andrews, about the staff well-being and also looking at not just numbers but students, that's something that I don't share enough, but that's certainly something that we look at. Now, to your question again, as it relates to what do we do with the difference, as I'm looking up with Kaiser being 25, and then we have the average class size for fifth grade being 20.5. I mean, since I've been in education, that's always been one of the things. How do we get better in it? And I don't have a significant response in this particular regard.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that what this tells me is like, we have begun to kind of fix, fix this, but, but maybe that there's still some, some work to do. Because, you know, 25 kids in a class seems, seems like a lot. And the variance between 20.5 and five seems, it's, can we, could we close that a little bit more? My other question is with regards to the on-deck teacher. Are, do principals have to? Like, is there a point, and maybe you've said this, and I'm just kind of foggy. Do they have to use the on-deck teacher? Or is this, and I know like they, they won't be able to if they're not certified, whatever, but...
So you're not foggy, because I didn't share it in that detail. I think, just taking a step back, there were interviews that took place with the on-deck teachers. And with that, when we say have to, I'm happy to report that the school that did go through the interview process, they elected to pick an on-deck teacher over the field that I would say, for lack of better terms, of staff that we had. So I think that says a lot about the individuals that we have in front of us, especially those who are certified. Now, when we say have to, I don't want to say necessarily have to, but we ask that they consider, strongly consider the individuals that are there. And so, this, I'll say the last person that's birthed through third certified. In the event that we open up a kindergarten, first, second, or third position, my conversation would be, hey, have a conversation with the on-deck teacher, considering all things. Let me know how the conversation goes a little bit more. Now, we could possibly go back and forth. We did present information about on-deck. All of the principals have been supportive of the pilot program. I don't anticipate anyone pushing back in that regard. But to Mr. Boyko's point, what happened if we have two individuals that are, I'm sorry, two schools that need a birth through third, or in this case, a kindergarten through third teacher, then how do we remedy those particular pieces? Those are the details that we'll be looking at. I don't say, I wouldn't say have to, but we are having conversations. And to this point, I don't see a reason why they would not take one, the remaining on-deck teacher in this particular regard, or if there was a gifted opening, the person with the gifted certification.
Okay. And then, just last, President Churn, with these changes that have been made, could we kind of have, once we get the school year going and that kind of thing, just kind of have a report out? Like, you know, with Dr., from Dr. Fields, like, hey, what worked from the on-deck? What, what would you suggest we change? What, you know, what hiccups, what, you know, kind of thing? And then, I would also, with regards to approving the class sizes, just that if we could bring that in a December timeline, and then we, we start to talk about and discuss in December and vote on those guidelines in December.
That's what we discussed in the agenda meeting.
Yeah. And then, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Thank you.
I guess you're up next. You're still in the hot seat. Next up, the staff exit surveys.
It's not too hot today.
Not too hot.
Thank you again. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Ulrich, community, and colleagues. Today, I have the pleasure of providing you with the exit survey report for the '23-'24 school year. Just a few pieces before I dive into the data. I do want to go back and hit home the purpose of the exit survey. Sometimes we jump into the data so much, and we don't talk enough about the sole purpose of making the main thing the main thing. And in this regard, there are six components that I want to make sure I hit home. The first of which is model that we value our staff and their perspectives, all of our staff. Learn from their experiences being a Kirkwood School District employee. Shape the future of employee experiences within the Kirkwood School District. Identify both the trends and the patterns in the data of the exit surveys. Enhance staff retention strategies, as well as improve the overall employee experiences within the Kirkwood School District. It's always great to not only disaggregate the data, but break it down and see what the numbers are actually showing us. With this high-level overview, the first set of data, I do want to make sure the reference point is with regards to the last seven years. You will see color-coded at the top. You will see the support staff that returned, as well as the support staff retention rates. You will see the certified staff, as well as the retention rates. And then, overall, the Kirkwood School District staff return, as well as the retention rates. And so, with this seven-year trend, we try to look at some pieces. And when you look at this in comparison to what other HR colleagues are sharing, as well as education as a whole, I am happy that the numbers are where they are. Now, last year was the highest we've had with retention at the 93%. We did dip a little bit, but it does appear that that is the highest that we've had over the last seven years. And I do think that is cause for celebration. As we proceed with the actual questions, all of these questions were pulled with the system or the protocol that was used prior to the 2021 school year, which was my first year. All of the questions are still the same for the most part. Now, this second piece speaks to a shift. So starting with the 2021 school year, the exit surveys transitioned to a Google form instead of the hard copy. They were easier to organize and archive the results. Additionally, the questions were amended to dive deeper into the data. More specifically, numerical values were added for two questions in particular. Being a data person, when you do accommodate the various groups, as well as a numerical piece, you can dive in and the numbers can begin to share different trends and patterns that qualitative components may not always share. Having said that, the current questions... Having said that, the current questions for the exit survey are on your screen. You will also see the, um, rate your experiences while working in Kirkwood as well as rate your experiences receiving support as the two quantitative components as we dive a little bit deeper in the, in the data. Now, you will see, why did you leave the district? That being a newer question, as well as the information that you will see on this continuation slide. The data in front of you now, you will see the number of exit surveys. Um, as stated, or what has continued to be pointed out, is that from two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, there are no archived exit surveys in, um, HR. That does not mean we had a hundred percent retention rate, but as I spoke briefly about the ability to archive the paper results, uh, we could not locate those, and that was prior, um, to my arrival as well. You will see all of the years that we have the data. You will see two thousand and eighteen, and then you will see a gap. But speaking from twenty-twenty-one school year, we will have all of the data archived, and so we will be able to go back and make some informed decisions as well as look at the data. And again, this is pursuant to July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. As I continue to let you know the participation, um, you will see the support staff in terms of the number of support staff surveys as well as the percentage of our overall support staff. And so when you see the eleven support staff surveys, that accommodates three-point-zero-two percent of our total population for support staff. Same information has been provided for our certified staff, uh, which does speak to three-point-nine-eight percent. And then you will see a global space as it relates to all of our staff, and that being three-point-five percent. So the data in context is that, that what you will hear from today is speaking to three-point-five percent of the overall Kirkwood School District staff population. This information is just for logistics, and so if you're wondering with Dr. Fields, who gets the opportunity to fill out a survey? Uh, one of the things that we've gotten really well at in HR is soon as we receive a letter of resignation, um, that person, um, will be emailed the information as it relates to the exit survey. It's a Google Doc. It goes right to the individuals. But I do want to take note that terminations are not sent the survey. That was a practice that started a while ago, and that is consistent with many of my other HR colleagues, where if there's a termination or even resignations in lieu of terminations, they do not receive the actual exit survey. Stated another way, if an individual is not eligible for rehire, they are not sent the exit surveys. As I dive into the qualitative space of the data before I provide a few charts, um, eighty-six individuals, um, received the exit survey. Um, of those who completed it, fifty-nine-point-three percent were certified, forty-point-seven percent were support staff. Uh, when we start looking at the actual respondents, seventy-four-point-one percent were female, twenty-five-point-nine percent male, seventy-nine-point-three percent were from white staff. Of the respondents, forty-eight-point-three percent were from elementary slash K E C C as they, the place that they report. Forty-four-point-eight percent were reporting from secondary, and then six-point-nine percent were from different locations. And so we have staff that report to multiple buildings. So if I report to both Huff and K E C C, it would show up in the other location as opposed to just with K E C C. And then this year, we had an average of seven-point-eight years of experience from the respondents. Now, as you look at the comparison data from twenty-twenty-one school year, you can begin to see a snapshot from all of the data. A metric that we decided to begin tracking in the HR office is the open rate. For any of us who are in communications, I wish Steph was here because she would be smiling. A sixty-five percent open rate is fantastic as far as I'm concerned with emails. However, we do want to make sure we continue to provide opportunities for people to have a space to provide us with the feedback. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but all of the data that you will see in front of you, with the exception of the open rate, was just shared on the previous slide. This is the first quantitative survey question of two. It is on a one-to-five scale, that being extremely dissatisfied to extremely satisfied. The data that you will see in front of you shares that four-point-seven was the average response out of five. The four-point-zero-seven is an increase from last year and the year before. The first year that we, um, implemented this digital form of, excuse me, the exit surveys, we had an overall rating of four-point-one-two, and this is just below that, so I do think that's a celebration as well. You will begin to see the racial breakdown, um, because again, we can accommodate for the different, um, groups. And so with the groups, you can see how all of those who, uh, filled out the question about race, where they were with respect to this particular question. You will see the gender, you will see the level, and you will see the classification, more specifically certified staff as opposed to support staff. The second quantitative question is in front of you, and that is rate your support. So again, the first one dealt with experience, the second one deals with support. And again, you will see an increase from last year, um, that being three-point-seven-six, as well as the year before. Um, that was three-point-seven-three. Um, in the first year of the digital, um, exit survey, there was four-point-two-two. Same rules apply. You will see the breakdown as it relates to race, gender, level, as well as classification. Because I love data and wanted to dive into it either further, and we want to make a lot of informed decisions, we were then able to look at the reasons why individuals were leaving the organization. And so all of the reasons that you'll see up there, that is pulled straight from the twenty-twenty-one school year. Um, having said that, you will see for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have seventeen-point-two percent decided to go for another education job. You will see the ten-point-three pres- uh, presume in a, in a space where they decided to pursue non-educational opportunities. And so that's the delineation, um, or the presumption that we have in this particular regard. You have the ten-point-three for relocation, or they did move. You have the resignation for twenty-point-seven. You have retirement for twenty-seven-point-six. And then you have something with respect to working conditions or working demands at thirteen-point-seven percent. And now that we have that information, we can then break down even further their experiences, which was on a one-to-five scale. You will see at the bottom, the four-point-zero-seven is the overall average. And then you also have the support piece, which on average was the three-point-seven-six. And so with those reference points, we can begin to look at ex-person, if they were, uh, retiring, for instance, what were the retirees rating for experience as opposed to support, and so on and so forth? In parentheses, you will see again, the percentage of the twenty-nine survey respondents, um, where they fared in those areas, with the majority of which being twenty-seven-point-six percent for retirement. We also have the year breakdown for those individuals that were in the organization, one to five years, or sixty-eight percent. You will see their rating, six to eleven years, the twelve to nineteen, and then the twenty-plus years. And again, at the bottom, you will see the global rating for both experience, working in Kirkwood School District, as well as the support working in Kirkwood School District. And I believe lastly, this breaks down to the actual population of the survey respondents. So you will see the administrators, or six-point-nine percent, what did they rate in terms of experience and support? Administrative assistant, classroom assistant, custodian maintenance, building and grounds, um, substitute. And then we also have with fifty-one-point-seven percent teachers. And so of that particular group, what was the experience and what was the actual support? That information is provided on the current slide. A question, um, that the board really posed after the first time, um, the digital, um, exit surveys were provided, and that was more so where are people going if they are going? And so for those individuals who reported taking another education job, where in fact are they going? And so this was the information that was gleaned from the exit surveys. Um, someone going to Francis Howe, Map St. Louis, which is a private school, Northwest School District Parkway, Rockwood, as well as Rittner. Now, it's important to note that seventy-five percent of the exit survey respondents reported that they are not joining another school district. And so I just want to make sure we have adequate context. Yes, we have the three-point-five percent of employees that we're hearing from, but we also want to keep into context that seventy-five percent of the exit survey respondents did not report going to another school district. Additional pieces of feedback, because again, we do want to make sure we get all of the feedback. Um, and there were six of which, um, that we want to make sure we get a chance to process and continue to grapple with. The first of which being better communication between administration and teachers. Increased compensation, more recognition for support staff roles. Address workload slash work-life balance concerns that came in across the board with both support, um, certified, um, as well as administration, that work-life balance piece was big. Um, more content-specific feedback for specialized roles. And so just to make sure you have adequate context, um, there was information about, let's just say I'm a music person, and my evaluator may not necessarily have a music background. What does an opportunity for specific feedback sound and look like? Um, improved consistency of policies and procedures around buildings. Um, we in HR office, we love consistency, we love policies. And so to see that bubble up in terms of some areas of improvement, to be consistent across, um, multiple buildings was something that certainly resonated as well. And last but certainly not least, before I turn it over for, um, any questions, um, now what? So we've had an opportunity to look at these data, not just for this school year, but for previous school years as well. Now what? Well, the continuation is to review the feedback with the administrative team, identify priority areas to address, continue gathering exit survey data to track, um, the trends, reevaluate survey questions annually, continue staff interviews, offer in-person exit surveys in the form of an interview as an option. We piloted that, that this year because of another person who's in HR. Um, we had some really good feedback, and so that's no longer going to be piloted after this year. Will be an option on the actual survey where you can sit down, talk to someone, and provide a lot more context. And then the other area is to place more and more emphasis on the exit survey. As we're continuing to look at offboarding, not just with onboarding, we want to continue to hit home not just the open rate, which is spectacular, but really making sure people get a chance to complete the exit surveys. With us having more support staff completing the exit surveys, that's great. But then we have with certified staff, someone may give, um, their retirement letter earlier, and we may send the exit survey in November, December, February, March, and making sure people get the opportunity. And so what does it sound and look like to create a space where they have both the time and the energy to be able to complete the survey? It's certainly an area that we're looking at in the HR office. With that, I'll see if Dr. Ulrich wanted to add anything, and then turn it over for any questions.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Fields. Uh, Dr. Fields, would you do me a favor? Would you scroll back to the district findings on the first of the qualitative questions, please? Uh, one of the things I want to make sure and say is, uh, much like I, I, I said to, uh, Mr. Romei, I want to say congratulations to you and your team, um, as we take a look at what we now, I believe, can determine to be trend data over four years. Um, I'd like the board to, and point out to the board in our community to take a look at that. If you think, if you figure a Likert scale from one to five, uh, anything that averages above two-point-five would skew towards the positive. Uh, every single number on there skews towards the positive. Uh, would you go ahead and, uh, click to the next qualitative, please? Same can be said here, um, over the last four years, and we've seen an increase, uh, now, um, uh, both in, in both of these measures. Uh, this is the result of, um, really, Dr. Fields coming in four years ago, and the board placing a heavy emphasis on, uh, on this work. Um, and, uh, again, want to, uh, commend you and your team for the work that you are doing. Um, not only are people staying at a greater rate than we've seen over the last seven years, uh, but the folks who are leaving, um, are telling us that they feel supported, um, and, uh, and they were happy overall with their experience in the Kirkwood School District. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Churn?
I'll start to my left. Um, excuse me. Ms. Andrews, do you have any questions?
I believe that I've asked this before, um, Dr. Fields. Um, is there any value in bringing this, um, survey to a third party? Um, do you think that, that the results would be impacted or?
I ha- I have two responses, um, as it relates to, uh, obtaining board feedback and, you know, diving into altering the questions and getting the data that we need. I think we can certainly do that in the HR office, and we like doing it. I just so happen to, um, have that skill set and that desire. Um, I guess the more selfish me and is more so if we want to have other individuals come in and do the work that we're already doing, if we think it's going to be a different response, I'm never going to push back on that. Having said that, we are trying to look at trends, we're trying to look at reasons why people are staying as well as reasons why people are leaving. I believe that data, um, is already here, um, but again, if the board would like to look other ways and have people come in, so be it. Um, to your question about do we think we would get different results? I don't necessarily, um, think so for one reason in particular. If you recall from the, uh, first two presentations out of the four, back in the twenty-twenty-one school year and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I surveyed all of my HR colleagues who responded, and it was an exhaustive list. And the results and the feedback that we're getting, not only, um, is that more so something that was not an anomaly, meaning we didn't have less participation. In fact, we had majority participation. But also the questions that we were asking, most peop- no one used a third party, but other people used like Survey Monkey and all of that. And it was a lot more focused on the quantitative, not the quant- the qualitative, excuse me, and not the qualitative and the quantitative. And so we're open to everything. We try to be flexible, but...
Um, I just appreciate you having thought about that and, um, you know, I, I think that at this point, you know, you're, you're the one doing this and you're the expert, so...
We're always open to feedback. I do want to make sure that comes through loud and clear. We don't take any of this personal. We just want to get better, and that's our role. And so if there are some things that we're not doing or some things we can get better with, we're always open to that.
I mean, that's, I, I believe that that's the purpose of, of this whole thing. Um, I might have more. I just want to...
Mr. Caffey?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, kind of summarize a few things. And I think you started to hit on this, Dr. Fields, when you said, um, the interview portion. So right now, this is all through Google Doc, which is great. Um, and I brought up this concept, and I'm sure we'll touch on it more when we go over the, um, strategic plan results with the panorama stuff, but it's survey response rate. So this is all, the context is, is there's twenty-nine of the eighty-six that it was sent to. Um, I couldn't help but think if you go to slide nineteen, that a lot of these kind of buckets, if you will, uh, make sure I have the right slide. Sorry.
Nineteen is here. There's the findings. So that's another... Right here.
Yes. Um, that all this is in the context of twenty-nine respondents, but we could probably get a significantly higher number of responses to bring this to more light by in-person communication. I'm thinking, and I'm drawing upon my own personal experience in, in the work world, that when somebody offers their resignation, you sit down and talk with them, and you're going to gather that information pretty quick. Probably be a five-minute conversation, so, um, I'm happy to hear that that interview, it sounds like it is going to be something that you do next year, because I would not doubt that you could double the number of your responses, um, which is really going to bring this to light. Um, so I'm happy that we're moving in that direction. Um, survey responses are just tough. And it's, I mean, honestly, getting a third is pretty good. Um, but on the flip side, we need to make sure that two-thirds of the people that left, we were not able to gather this information. So I'm happy to hear that we're, and I strongly support, you know, and let us know whatever resources you need to do that. But I, I think, I don't want to oversimplify it, but probably five to ten to fifteen-minute conversation is going to gather all of this. And you might as well just do it when you're in person, so...
Absolutely. I think, uh, first off, I thank you for that. Um, it means a lot as it relates to throwing those ideas out because we do want to capture the thoughts. I do want to thank the board because, um, one of our additional members in HR, um, Candace Harris. Uh, once the numbers go up, it'd be because of her. If you get a chance to see her personality, I'm, I'm sure she's a therapist in another world. Just sitting down and talking to her, uh, we did it this year, and the feedback was great for the little pilot that we did. And so I anticipate offering that will be great and giving her role. We do want to make sure folks are able to be critical. This isn't just to sit down and say all the things that are being great. No, we do want to make sure we highlight those pieces, but in context, what are some areas or what are some things we could have done to keep you? I think that's very important. And so with that, I second your comments with respect to the in-person, and we're going to bump those efforts up a lot.
Yeah, because, you know, work demands and conditions, you know, comes, kind of stands out to me. But I, I want to be very careful that that thirteen-point-seven percent is of twenty-nine respondents, of which eighty-six left. So looking at it now, I would, again, I would not doubt you're going to double the number of responses next year, and then see if that truly comes out, because, you know, one of the questions I wrote down is how do we even go about tackling that? But I also want to be very careful, um, that you've got to really dive into the data before you go too far with it. But this is, this is great stuff. But this is, this is great stuff. I think my last point, I looked back at last year's report as well. Communication's a common thread. I think it'll come out in any survey that we do, in any setting. How do we really dive into that? And I don't know the answer. Communications is a massive bucket. It's been a common thread between last year and this year since I've been on the board. What does that mean? Like, where would we specifically be coming up short there? You know, I think that would be in terms of using this to go forward and figure out where you start pulling the thread and doing further investigation. I don't know if you have any insight now, but I think that's an important thing that I pulled from this.
I do. I wish we can call it something else other than communication. I wish it was almost like timely or situational communication, because overall, it may be, well, communication is great, everything that I need to know, I need to know. However, if it's a difficult conversation, or if I would have known that I didn't have days left, or if I would have known this wouldn't have happened, it's almost like those reflecting and context, those comments speak to communication. It wasn't much about, oh, my goodness, I didn't know about retirement, oh, my goodness, I didn't know. It wasn't anything like that. It was more so about those situational matters that folks get highly emotional, and understandably so, that there is always some room for improvement. And so we take that, you almost have to strip down the comments specific to what's going on, and try to get better. But to your point, it's difficult just to encapsulate it as communication, because it is so much more.
Lastly, back to the overall retention rate, which 87% is still really good. Do we have a feel, I just know, again, drawing from my own professional experience, we try to split that out into voluntary and nonvoluntary. Do we have a feel if there's any, and I'm not asking you to cite that specific, but is there a trend in either direction, or is that holding pretty steady in terms of terminations versus, you know, people retiring or moving on to a different job?
It's been pretty much consistent for the most part. I haven't seen anything that I'm like, oh, my goodness, we have a lot more here or there. And that's me briefly reflecting on all of the numbers since the 2021 school year. Nothing has stuck out, but I will, your comment is certainly well-received. I'll process it through that lens a little bit more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boyko?
Not really a question, but while we're on the retention slide, I think that's, to me, that's the most compelling slide here in terms of the work that you guys are doing, and just really appreciate how that number has been. Frankly, I think last year's was unsustainable, really. If you think about, we want people to retire at some point. But seeing, someone asked me this weekend, what was the biggest story of the district that's not being talked about? And I mentioned this specifically, and really appreciate the work that globally goes into having a number that strong.
Thank you. As a competitor, Dave and I really wanted 93.2 or even 94. The only other thing that I would mention, Mr. Boyko, is in context, ERS, which is an organization, they focus on retention, specifically in the education field. And for the 2223 school year, in education, it is a 67% retention rate. And of that 67%, we're looking at the 23% that's leaving. That 23%, 40% of which go to more affluent schools or places that pay better and all of that. So in that context, I do think it's something where we at least have a reference point. We don't ever want to get close to the 67%. But when we're looking at education as a whole, and also education beyond the COVID numbers, I would say those numbers look fantastic. Now we just have the pressure of making sure it remains in that area.
Ms. Moltika?
Again, I want to give you props for the retention. That was really nice to see. And when I was looking at the rate ratings, one through five, and I know that in the middle, we want to be anything above the middle, but I looked at anything under four, because we are a B-plus district or higher. So I didn't like anything that was under four. And a couple of the things that really stuck out to me, and I'm already thinking, the beefed-up mentorship programs that we're going to be implementing this fall. I know Dr. Granna has done a whole lot of work defining what mentors are. We've got the K-Talk mentors, and I'm really excited about that, especially to see these numbers next year, because it was the receiving support, again, that was under four, almost across the board. And then when I look at the district findings, when it talks about one through five years, 68% of our people had only been there for one through five years, and they were ranking support received at 3.6. And, you know, I know, we've talked about this in previous years, and I know those new teachers are hard to keep, because maybe they get into it and decide, wow, I don't like teaching, and we don't want them in our buildings. But for the ones who are overwhelmed, who don't feel they're getting the support, we really, this is still an area that I want us to continue to focus on, because those are the people I worry about. And, you know, so those were the numbers that really jumped out at me. And so I look forward to seeing even better numbers next year. And thank you for getting all this information to us and for everything you do for our staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moltika. Just two points I want to make sure for full context. When you mentioned all of the mentors, I do want to make sure I thank the board, because we have supported mentors for administration as well. That was an area that was considered an untapped market, so to speak, and hearing that and seeing that that made a difference in a lot of regards, less staff, but that's an area that I certainly want to make sure we bring up. But the other piece is, when we look at staff being in one through five years, we had a number of support staff who were less than even a year or what have you. And so I think we do a B-plus job, frankly, with the certified staff and all of that. But some areas that we have to look at, looking at the data in context, is more so custodians or long-term subs or floating nurses, for instance. I think even for myself, that's a blind spot, because when we talk about all of these pieces, you don't always think about what is an adequate experience for a person who will be here temporarily, a venture club, et cetera. So those are areas, in addition to what you shared, that the data has shared with our team, areas that we have to get better in.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hepburn?
I want to say first, I really appreciate those insights around the support staff piece, and that being a heavy component of that one-to-five-years metric, because I think that is not, you know, the first thing you think of, and if you've identified that trend or pattern, that's great, because that gives us an opportunity to improve that for those people. So I really appreciate that insight. And I want to make sure I heard you before, were you saying that there is some sort of industry educational standard for retention rate around 67%? Is that what you said?
That is correct. For the 2223 school year, 67%.
Okay.
And that's staying, and just to make sure I'm specific, that's staying in the same school. So even if someone were to transition to another school or district, they tracked all of that, and it is more so 67% retention rate in education during that time for the school.
For staying at the school?
School and district.
Specific school, not district, or?
It encompasses both.
Okay.
So if someone left the district, that would count against, but if someone left the building to another building, that would count against it as well.
Okay. I really appreciate that number, because when you think of something like that, it puts into context something like, oh, five percentage points down, if we're still so far above the industry standard. Obviously, we all want to be at 100% or, you know, we want to let people retire 90%, 95%, whatever Boyko thinks is appropriate. But, you know, but I, you know, I appreciate knowing that we're doing that well in context. The other piece, so kind of building off something that Mr. Boyko and Mr. Caffey kind of talked about a little bit, with looking at those overall retention rates, not necessarily voluntary versus involuntary, but I think one thing would be interesting is to pull out retirements. You know, I think what I'm really interested in is the number of people who, for one reason or another, were working in our district and made the choice to leave and find employment somewhere else because we were not meeting their needs. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to tease that out a little bit. And maybe it doesn't make sense, I'm not sure. And then kind of along those lines as well, something I found interesting, or maybe you can add some context or help me a little bit, but with these survey responses, I've got to remember, I think, was that 19 is what? With the reasons, sorry, I'm getting to it. Yeah, here it is. With the working demands conditions, that's the outlier, because you could have, you could say, I don't care for the working conditions, and therefore I'm leaving to another school district. Do you know what I mean? So I'm trying to understand that choice in context with these other choices. Are people allowed to pick more than one? Like, can somebody say, I'm pursuing new opportunities because I don't like the conditions, or I'm going to another district because I don't like the conditions? Or is that, what's, yeah, what can you?
So in context, for another education job, oftentimes, those are individuals who decided to go, and I call it a non-lateral movement. So we had a number of individuals where they are going to take a position where it's different from their current position, they're going to make more money. So that is a space that's there. It doesn't happen with all the time, but there are some instances where someone make a lateral movement for whatever reason that they have. For working conditions slash demands, those are the comments and the information that's more or less, I can't do X anymore. X could be, I can't do the education field. There are some things that are going on that are incredibly personal, those types of comments. We want to have more children, and like, stuff like that does show up. And if, in fact, when you combine that with the following question, are you going to another school district? If the answer is yes, then that's more so another job. But if it's no, I'm leaving education, or I'm taking a year off or whatever, that goes into the working conditions slash demand box.
So you're saying somebody could say working conditions and also say they're pursuing new opportunities?
Yes.
So somebody could have answered both those questions?
That would have been, that would have gone in the another education job piece. That's what that would have done in terms of that particular box.
Okay. But on this slide, there's no overlap between those.
There's no overlap on this slide.
Okay. So there are people that the only thing they said is working demands conditions.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the last question I had was just whether or not we look at some of these responses and feedback pieces sorted by building, just in case there may be a particular building that maybe we're having higher turnover, and maybe we're hearing a lot of the same reasons given, something like that might be actionable. So I was just curious if we look at stuff like that by building?
I have not. I could go back and look at all of the responses since the 2021 school year and try to see if there are any trends by building, but from a district standpoint, I have not looked at it per building necessarily.
Okay. That's all I have.
Ms. Pangborn?
Well, thank you, Dr. Olrich and Dr. Fields. I wanted to just start by saying, I really appreciate, Dr. Olrich, your leadership and guidance here over the last couple of years. Since we've been asking for this information to be looked at, it's just been, the information that has been transparently shared about our exit surveys has really grown, and we've really dove deeper. So I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership here, and thank you, Dr. Fields, for being slightly vulnerable, right, and showing, you know, some of this information that you have tonight. I think it can only help us grow in the future. And I agree with the comment that Ms. Hepburn just made about, is there a way to break the data down even more by people who didn't retire, but are taking another position to understand why there? Because that might give us a little, that might or may not, but that might give us some other information. So I thought that was a really good point, and I wanted to just add on there. And then I had one other comment that I don't think anybody else made, but in the future, if we're making improvements to, you know, really address our culture, or really make improvements based on some of this feedback, it'd be really good to celebrate or to share out with people why we're doing it, so that we're connecting some of what we're hearing to improvements that we're making in the district. Again, just to really show that we are listening, and going back to Mr. Caffey's point about the, you know, that communication, we're communicating what we're improving based on feedback. So just really appreciate all of the transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrews, did you have?
Dr. Fields, so with the 57 people who didn't respond, do you have a plan this year to kind of contact them and kind of try to?
I kind of anticipate that question, so not only did we contact them, we contacted them before they left on their Kirkwood devices. We contacted them multiple times on their non-Kirkwood information. We did get a few additional responses. Since completing this, there were a few additional ones, so that number has actually increased. But we try to reach out as much as possible to try to get as many responses as possible. So yes, to answer simply.
Thanks.
The only thing that I wanted to share before I turn back over to you, Madam President, Ms. Shern, is that technically, if someone retires and then they came back and sub, are they, is it part of the retention? But I didn't want to get into that level of math, so.
Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Thank you.
Next up, 5.03, the student discipline report. Mr. Bailey, Dr.?
Do you have anything prior to him starting? Okay. Good evening, everybody. We take a look at our discipline every year. We've done this since I've been here as well, and what we look at are just different metrics that we go over. So you guys will see just different information that's going to come, going back to the 2017, 2018 school year. And just as a preview, you will see dips, obviously, whenever COVID came through, especially when we were on virtual for majority. So some of those, they look nice, but it's, there's a reason behind some of those dips with the COVID piece. So some overall trends that we saw with the summary, there is district-wide commitment to reduction of behavior incidents, OSS and ISS as consequences, and closing gaps. That does not mean, however, and I want to emphasize, does not mean that we overlook doing any kind of discipline referrals that are necessary. What we look at is when those are necessary, are there other options or other opportunities? If you recall, Dr. Harold did a great job explaining, so I'll just reinforce, that there may be situations where a student is arguing with someone else in the hallway, and if the principals can get there, or a teacher can get there, correct that, and have the student go to class, that doesn't always result in an office referral, but it's still them dealing with a disciplinary situation. Whereas there were times, I remember even when I was a first-year teacher, that it was, you know, if a kid didn't blink in a way that you wanted, office referral, office referral, the kind of old-school mentality. And so we really look at opportunities for that. Their overall referrals did increase, but there are decreases in both ISS and OSS in some areas. And so when it comes to those consequences, looking at alternatives, we do utilize restorative practices when there are office referrals, but also when there are not, just like I described with the hallway interaction. There are teachers that are committed to those interactions on a daily basis with their students that don't result in office referrals. And so I want to make sure we celebrate the teachers doing that hard work in those classrooms. Those are where the office referrals start, and the majority of our students, those are where those discipline situations are occurring, is within the classroom. So our teachers do a terrific job with that. There are still disproportionate gaps that exist for African-American students and students with IEPs. And then what you'll see on some of the charts is specifically looking at African-American students with IEPs as another disproportionate situation. So jumping into the overall numbers, you can see that there has been an overall decrease from back in 2017, 2018, but there's been a increase over the last couple of years. You can see the COVID dip and then coming out of that. So really, last year and this year are a little bit more apples-to-apples comparison than a couple of years before. So you can see that we did have an increase in the referrals across the board. There was an increase in the number of referrals for our Black African-American students. There was a decrease in referrals for students with IEPs, and a decrease for students who are identified as Black African-American with IEPs as well. We do look at those consequences and what sort of consequences are given. Just as a reminder, only a principal or assistant principal can assign an in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. That's not something that our teachers are doing. So when it comes to our ISS, you can see there is a decrease from last year. It's not a huge, but there is a slight decrease. There is, however, an increase for our Black African-American students when it comes to ISS. We did see a decrease for We did see a decrease for students with IEPs, and it's pretty much, uh, the same number, fifty-seven to fifty-eight for our Black students with IEPs as well, um, when it comes to ISS. I do want to point out again, it's still a significant reduction from the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. Uh, we didn't have as much data on the year before, so that's why this starts there. I won't, and a couple of years ago, I tried to read those numbers for the twenty twenty-one school year, but they're not even, you can't even read it now, so. Uh, OSS, happy to see that there is still a decrease in terms of OSS. This is one of our, our lowest numbers since COVID was there. When we see the, the slight, uh, in, sorry, the decrease from last year to this school year, you can see there are decreases for our Black African-American students, decreases for students with IEPs, and students that identify as Black African-American with an IEP. So, the, the good news about that is if a student is in ISS, they're still in our building, they still have access to our staff, they still have access to special education services, they still have access to counselors, support staff, principals can visit. Not saying ISS is great, but in terms of comparing it to OSS, there is a preference, um, for us to have that student at school, have all those resources available. Just so that the board is aware also, if a student does receive special education services, those services are still delivered if a student is in, in-school suspension. Uh, but if they're at home on out-of-school suspension, they're not able to access that service. Um, so we do see that decrease in overall OSS, uh, which is a positive step. It means that our students are spending more time in the buildings and less time on a suspension. I do want to clarify, because you'll see lots of different charts on here as well, that hundred and seventy-seven for the overall referrals that resulted in OSS, it could be that there's one student that has four or five of those, and that's counted four or five times, not just, that's not a hundred and seventy-seven students, that's just a hundred and seventy-seven referrals that resulted in that. You'll actually see a little bit later, uh, the percentage of our, our total population that receives OSS is very low. We do break down as we go through different pieces, and this is where it does get a little confusing. I don't know why I do this to myself, but we want to take a little bit deeper dive, um, into everything. When we talk about disproportionality, disproportionality comes in many different forms, and just a brief, kind of, uh, layman's definition of that disproportionality is if a particular subgroup has a higher percentage in something than they really should. And so one easy way that we look at it is if we're looking at our Black African-American students, for example, last year, they comprised eight point eight percent of our district. So easy math, you would think, well, that should be roughly eight to ten percent of discipline, eight to ten percent of whatever the category is. Um, and unfortunately, that's not the case. It hasn't been the case for a while. Uh, but the last school year, you can see that, uh, while comprising eight point eight percent of the district in terms of population, uh, thirty-five point one percent of our referrals, uh, office referrals were for Black African-American students. And then the percent that resulted in ISS was forty-three point eight, and the percent that resulted in OSS was fifty-one point four. So again, that could be that there's more than one, uh, student could have more than one incident there, uh, but the number of referrals that resulted in that is a higher percentage clearly than the overall percentage across the district. Those same, um, reflections happen when we look at students who receive special education services, uh, students that receive, uh, services comprise thirteen point four percent of our district, but thirty-one point four percent of referrals, thirty-six point four percent of ISS, and forty-five point one percent of OSS. Granted, those, uh, student categories could overlap. So a student could be Black African-American and have an IEP and be represented in both of these slides, just so that if you're doing math and you're thinking numbers don't add up, it could be that students are represented twice in different sections. This one is, is certainly one to take a, a deeper dive on as well. So on the left, you'll see the percent of OSS. What this is, is what percentage of our entire district has received at least one incident of out-of-school suspension? And actually, I would say that's a pretty solid number. We would always want zero, but for one point four percent of our district has received, um, OSS. If you flip that, that means ninety-eight point six percent of our district has not, um, which is a solid number. However, again, the disproportionality, while it is trending in a good direction, is still disproportionate when it comes to those overall percentages. This does look at, one student is only counted one time, even if they had more than one consequence. So if, if one student was suspended three times, they're only showing up once on this particular, uh, chart. So seven point two percent of our Black African-American students have received at least one OSS, and four point five percent of our students who receive special education services have received at least one incidence of OSS. So that's, that's where those come a little bit different than those graphs before. Uh, the ones before look at, what is the overall percentage of those consequences that are make up by each of those groups? And this particular one looks at, on an individual student-by-student basis, what number, what percentage of our students comprise each of these groups. Again, trending in a positive direction, but still disproportionate in that, um, only one point four percent of the entire district was suspended, but seven point two percent of our Black students and four point five percent of our students with IEPs, uh, received a suspension. And so when it comes to questions, I always like to talk about what sorts of things do we already have in place, what's next? There is a commitment, like I said, to, um, de-escalation strategies, to, uh, our CPI strategies that are taught to crisis teams at the beginning of every year. We do have our SEL coaches that go in and check in on our, we were mentioning new teachers, check in on new teachers, look at classroom management, look at universals, we call them, just sort of things that, are rules posted, are, you know, objectives posted, do we have calming corners available for students? Really taking a look at what, uh, interventions are available and providing those supports. Uh, our TAs are huge in, in terms of providing those supports, so we train TAs and restorative practices as well. And, uh, Dr. Map has mentioned before, with, with his help and with our SEL coach team, continuing to cycle through training with our restorative practice pieces. However, we still want to continue to emphasize classroom management is extremely important, um, and that's not consequences, but do you have rules, routines, procedures, predictability in place for our students? Um, and you can see also that the, one of the key metrics we look at with restorative practices are, how many kids are, quote, repeat offending? Do we have students that are doing that? And the majority of our students who have received an out-of-school suspension have not received a second one. It is a very small number of students that have received that. Numbers, when, when you think about buildings, obviously with the high school having more students than anybody, the discipline trends a little bit higher in terms of overall, or, or number. And unfortunately, um, and this is the case, and this has been the case in almost every year that I've been involved with high school, number one reason why students are suspended at high school is not because of behavior happening in the classroom, but it's that thing they're trying to hide in the bathroom when they're vaping or they're, or having some issues there. Um, and so it used to be smoking, it used to be some things that are happening out there. But do want to emphasize that our teachers have done a tremendous, tremendous job in terms of their classroom management, in terms of their relationships with students, um, and in terms of going through the restorative practice pieces. We're continuing to see declines in the areas that we should see, not at the pace that we would like to see that, um, and we're still disproportionate in some of those areas. Uh, but in working closely with our SEL coaches and working closely with our SSD team, we are seeing positive trend data in those areas. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um, I don't know, I think I started. Ms. Pangborn this time? All right. Pangborn, do you have any questions? Or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I have one question, and I had a parent share a story with me that I'm not going to share because it's not my story, but when we have specifically in-school suspensions, how are we taking into account individual student needs or history or specific, you know, IEP situations before we're making that call for an, you know, an ISS that's taking them out of the classroom?
Just to make sure I understand, it's not?
Are we working with families to better understand situations?
Yeah, and so, yes, I would say yes, and, uh, if we have a student that has an IEP, that there are opportunities within those IEP meetings, within five oh four meetings, to talk about things that are impacting a student in the classroom. Um, and some of those are going to be related to a disability area, um, and some of them might be as, as part of those areas of disability. I'm, I'm cautious to say that that doesn't always mean that a student wouldn't receive a consequence or wouldn't have, uh, an ISS piece that could come along with that. Um, but in many cases, the principals will take as much information as they can regarding a student into account when you're making disciplinary decisions. Um, it is always a challenge because there are still policy pieces that if, if you do this, sometimes it's going to result in a specific consequence. But I know our principals do a nice job working with our, uh, special education team to make sure that we're taking that into account. We have, we have asked and required our principals, um, in many cases, and, and reviewed this last year, and we'll do that again this year, that if you have a student that's been sent to the office for a potential suspension and they have an IEP, we request that they bring in that student's case manager or resource teacher to have some discussions. Um, sometimes there may be reasons why a, a student is struggling with language expression, for example, and having their special ed case manager can help them understand questions that are being asked, because they may answer a question one way, and, and if you rephrase it, it may be answered differently, um, with those pieces. So we do bring in the case managers to provide that support during that time. And then, like I mentioned, we, uh, have used some of our special education teachers as almost an early intervention because they're great with behavior management and behavior, uh, supports for students, uh, to provide those, uh, pieces as well. We probably are not perfect with it. We can always make improvements on those areas, but we true try to take those things into account as, as each time as possible.
And, and just one follow-up question, and that extends outside of the classroom, right? Just like anywhere in, in the building when we're through situations?
Like hallways, cla, like cafeteria, playground things, is that what you're?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, yeah, it should. Um, with some of the, the people that come in, we want to always make sure we're reviewing those. Um, playground's a little bit more difficult, just because it's, the kids are everywhere and you may not realize who the student is when you've got the whole grade level on those. Uh, but we do have our teams review those procedures with the, the TAs as much as possible, and just make sure that if there are behavior intervention plans or other support plans that students have, that the people have copies of those or have access to those.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you for sharing that. I'm sorry for my very specific.
No, that's okay.
Questions. I just, I want to continue to see us be as proactive as possible here and working with, you know, our students and their families, um, so that we can continue to try to minimize when we're pulling, you know, kids out of the classroom.
Hundred percent agree.
Especially some of our, you know, students with IEPs, uh, just in looking at some of that data.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely agree.
No other questions?
Thank you. Ms. Hepburn? When you talk about the training, that we're working our way through the training, are all staff, you know, in, that are in the building earmarked for that training process, or are we only targeting certain types of employees for that?
So, yeah, great question. So last year was our first year looking at sort of a group extended training that we put into place. So our counselor, or, sorry, our SEL coaches, and Dr. Map was a part of this work as well, so I want to make sure to recognize him, um, did a two-day training, half-day each day for our counselors, uh, as sort of a pilot starting group to see, let's really look at our restorative practice options and what those could be and, and look like. Through the years, many of our buildings have sent, um, groups of cohorts to EdPlus for training. Uh, we found that while it was very good, you can see turnover happens, and when that turnover happens, we want to make sure that we're providing additional training and support for our staff. So, uh, when we say that we want to roll that out to all of our teachers, we've done a great job doing that with our new teachers and new to Kirkwood teachers, beginning teachers, where we continue to have a great place to improve are those five, six, seven-plus-year veterans that are in the classroom that usually don't need as much support, um, systemically, but they have one hundred percent availability to call on and request support from our SEL coaches at any point. Our SEL coaches are often a part of data team meetings and behavior meetings and SEL meetings in the building, and so that support may just be assigned even without somebody asking or requesting it. So they're available to provide that, um, but it is an area we can keep growing in with the systematizing it.
Yeah, I would think, um, classroom teachers in general would be great to have that additional training. Um, and then, I mean, do you have an idea, I mean, would you say we have a pretty significant portion of our staff in the buildings that are trained on restorative practices at this point?
I, I would say yes, but I would, I would add a caveat that training on restorative practices can look like fifty or sixty different things. So when we talk about our Kirkwood philosophical approach to those restorative practices and opportunities, we started putting together a manual last year and really taking a deeper dive on what that could look like last year with our, with our team. And so we haven't gotten that piece out to as many folks, but in terms of cohorts that have gone through EdPlus with some restorative practice training, there is a large portion, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I recently got a much more in-depth understanding of restorative practices. Shout out to Dr. Map. And, you know, one of the pieces that I found so fascinating about it with a more nuanced understanding is just all around the general, like mindful mediation and communication strategies. And so, you know, to take the example you gave of, okay, there's two students fighting in the hallway, let's, you know, can we get there early and get one kid to class? I mean, to me, I would think the opportunity would be, how can we help these two students communicate in a way that we can work through the conflict? Um, so I guess I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity, much like we do with some of our other, like DEI stuff, integrating into the classroom, just like communication strategies, conflict resolution-type strategies, um, that's more preventative and skillset that like every student could benefit from? And maybe we're doing that. I mean, I've only, you know, I may have missed that meeting, but, um, you know, that's something I would be interested in seeing us doing, and I know that's training and time and resources, but.
No, it's very good. And we do, there's like some specific questions that we hand out cards for our teachers to look at restorative questions. I think though, um, the challenge is, and Dr. Map will understand when I say this as well, that we don't, we can't just do restorative practices. We have to be restorative, we have to live that, that has to be our environment, we have to look at how you can repair that harm. Um, but on the, on the flip side, we also have to look at, how can we prevent harm from ever happening?
Right.
What strategies can we put into place? So it's a bit of a two-sided approach to it. Um, but I would look at our, the number of students who are not, quote, repeat offenders is evidence that there are restorative options and opportunities that are working, that students are learning, uh, from those. And, and that is one reason why when you look at our discipline code as well, that it's a progression of consequence, that the same behavior in first grade is, is dealt with differently than that same behavior in tenth grade.
Right.
Because it's still very teachable, very much, we can work through that. Not that it's not that way at tenth grade, um, but if you come through our system for eight, nine, ten years, you've had lots of opportunities to learn. But it is an area our teachers can continue to grow in. Um, it's one of those that ties directly into retention as well, that if good classroom management leads to, to teachers that are in a better place, um, mentally and emotionally also.
Yeah, I think, um, you raise an interesting point around the repeat offenders stat, and I guess I'd be interested over the course of however many years, I mean, I don't know if there's a way to track, like, are methods keeping people from being, you know, are we seeing fewer repeat offenders now versus two years ago? Because if that's one of the things that we look to, to say, restorative practices are working, like, we're doing something right, um, you know, I think we'd all love to see repeat offenders numbers go down then, so. That's all I got?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, sorry, Ms. Maltika?
Thank you for all of this, Dr. Bailey. And first of all, um, it is great to see that out-of-school suspensions are down. And, you know, because that, you know, pulling a kid out of the school is, is never good. Um, I wondered if you have looked at breaking down these numbers by grades and by schools? Because, you know, the overall referrals is the highest number since eighteen, nineteen school year. Um, overall ISS, there's very little change for kids with IEPs. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if one school has figured out strategies that, so that their numbers look better, um, what can we share about that across the district? Or if, you know, is another school a real outlier, good or bad? What can we learn from that? So I think that would be a really interesting thing to have, um, along with, you know, how are our repeat offenders doing? Um, but, you know.
It's a terrible term. I don't know what else to say.
High flyers, please, they're not criminals.
I borrow a term from Elizabeth Locker, Red Hot Chili Peppers.
Right, frequent flyers. Um, so, you know, again, it's really good to see the out-of-school suspensions going down. Now I want us to focus on how do we get these other numbers looking better?
And so to your response, one, one of the, uh, wonderful tools that we have available, and the board has seen this a few times, Edge of Climber is able to not only break that down for us in terms of by building, by grade level, by time of day, by day of the week, by, um, you know, who is maybe submitting that. So we go over that with our principals, and we'll go over that with them again at our back-to-school, uh, meetings with our principals. Um, you know, obviously, if we were to just show raw numbers, the high school with having the most students is going to have the most referrals, so it's not necessarily percentage reflective-wise, uh, but I agree, there are ways that we can learn from, and what is working well within one building may work very well in another, um, and what opportunities do we have? One thing that we were able to do with some of our administrative professional development that I think was interesting for the principals to see is we got a chance to do walkthroughs in different buildings. So our high school team got to see early childhood and got to see what those students look like at, at that age. But not only that, they got to see how teachers are interacting with and dealing with and working through, uh, just different behaviors. And obviously, the behaviors are very different, but seeing where students are at and. But seeing where students are at and seeing how well students do and dealing with everything. I know that our principals and our teachers are very committed to maximizing classroom time for our students, which means minimizing office, minimizing hallway, minimizing OSS and ISS. And we even track like how many times a student is going to a nurse, because is that an escape versus an actual medical need? And those sorts of data points are things our buildings do look at at an individual level. So we do, we do those things, which we can always keep learning and making those kind of co-mingling about learning strategies between buildings, so.
Mr. Boyko. Kathy?
Main question, I'm sure you would have mentioned this, but is there anything you need, resources? I hear your points about the proactive approach. A lot of it's classroom management, but really just want to give the point across if there's anything that you need from a resource staff, let us know.
I do want to emphasize again, the number one, the best thing that we have for our students is our tremendous teachers. And you'll see on our exit survey, just how highly thought of our teachers are as well, but continuing to equip and train our teachers and provide those supports for those teachers because everybody has, you know, kind of a candle that at some point is burned down. And that makes it a little bit more difficult for them to deal with challenging behaviors in the class. So what ways can we provide those supports? But I know the board has been very committed to this. The, the discipline changes that were made in the policy several years ago have been reflected in these numbers. But it's not just the discipline changes, it's the supports that we've provided. SEL coaches are not something that's common across the district. Looking at the mentoring is going to be a great way to improve this, looking at our new teacher orientation, all of those things that are tying in together are hopefully going to show improvements in these areas as well. But I joke with Dr. Ulrich, or actually today, that we know these numbers are never going to be zero because if somebody were to figure out what that would look like, they would be multimillionaires to have no, no challenges. But the challenges that we're seeing are definitely different in terms of behaviors. Coming out of COVID, we have definitely seen a little bit more acting out and a little bit more anger and frustration from the students. And finding their words to express that is always the thing that we want to keep circling back to. And it's, it's similar to what we talk about even with my own children. It's okay to be angry, but how you express that can be different in different ways. So processing and working through, I think our board has been very supportive with things like our chaos mentors, with our approach to restorative practice training, SEL coaches. So I think we're, we're just continuing that journey in a good place. But I appreciate that.
Yes, I think it'd be important to, and I'm not, not by, like everybody knows my, my stance on surveys and their limitations with the response rate, right? So I'm not advocating for more surveys, but be interesting to know what our teachers felt, if they felt like we are really moving the needle in terms of equipping and training them. Like, do they feel, one, they, they're acquiring the knowledge, skills and abilities year over year, but what else do they need?
Sure.
So, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Hello, Dr. Bailey. Thanks for your work on this. One of the things that does come up, and sometimes this is a little bit of a tricky situation, but I'll have teachers or even parents kind of mention that our standards have changed and, you know, we're not holding kids accountable and that kind of thing. And I know that with changes in how we handle discipline, that it can, you know, it looks different than how they may have been disciplined when they were growing up. So my question is that, do you feel like we are dealing with the discipline issues? That are, I mean, are there, do you feel like there's any possibility that we could not be reporting or that kind of thing?
I don't, I don't think that we're underreporting. What I would say is, is what I would say for anything, which is we can always be better at what we do and how we do it. Kids are always going to be a challenge. You know, when you look at multiple years of education and data, when you talk about teacher retention, one of the number one things you'll hear is that if people left, they left because the, the management strategies that they had in place were a challenge, or the classroom difficulties were challenges, or if a sub had a classroom and didn't want to come back. So I think we can always improve on those universals, those, those, do we have consistency with rules, routines, procedures? Kids love and crave predictability. And it may sound like it's a little bit of micromanaging for some, but, and those of you that are educators will understand when I say this goes in this bin, this goes in that bin, and this goes here, and this goes here. It gives kids predictability. And, and they crave that and they want that. And that leads to something in terms of behavior pieces. But I think where we can continue to improve is it shows up in our wellness meetings when we talk to our students, that our students are also very much craving relationships and relationships with their teachers, relationships with other students, relationships with the administrators. And our teachers and administrators do a very, very good job of making those connections with kids and making those personal pieces. And so I think it's not an underreporting. I, our trend data is actually much stronger than the state of Missouri in general, which has seen almost a three times increase in, in discipline over the years, especially coming out of the pandemic. So in those numbers, we're looking very strong. But we can continue to improve in those areas that I know our kids are asking for, relationship pieces, getting to know us, communication, as we were mentioning earlier. And then I think one of the challenges that we're seeing is that some of the, some of our behaviors are just bigger than they used to be. Like when a kid is upset, they're upset versus just a little bit upset. So we're seeing just bigger behaviors from kids. But with our commitment to maximizing classroom instructional time and maximizing time in the classroom, what that might look like that is different than even when I was in school, is that if a student has an issue, they might be back in class an hour later because that issue's been resolved, whereas there was a time when that one issue meant you were gone for the rest of the day. So we want to maximize that instructional time and show kids that they can continue to grow, continue to learn and continue to repair that harm. And so I don't think we're overlooking those. Our principals do a very good job of, of keeping an eye on that as well.
Okay, great. Because, you know, one of the things that I think is important is while we do need to look at this and work on this data, that we do it in a way that we're partnering with our principals and our teachers, because I think that what can happen is they can feel the pressure to lower the number and and we want to make sure that, that we're, we're supporting.
I would agree. And I would add partnering with our parents on those as well.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. On the, I'm looking at the overall OSS slide. I don't have the slide number. But I'm no mathematician, but can, the red, yellow and green numbers should add up to the blue number?
Not always, because if you're.
It would be less than though, right? No?
No, because what we may have happened is that you may be a black student, you may also have an IEP, so you're technically reflected in both red and yellow, but then also green. So yeah, those aren't always going to add up to that exactly. Thank you for asking though, because you made me do a double take, like, hang on, wait a second.
Okay. And then, just speaking of OSS, you kind of spoke to it. You said, so when our kids are in out of school suspension, they're just home. Is there, or have we thought of?
Well, I'll add a caveat to that. So if a student, given example, if a student were suspended for three days because they, whatever the offense was, they got a three day suspension, that's typically going to be at home. If a student has an offense that has required them to then come and have a discipline review where they now have a long-term suspension, we actually have options for that as well. It could include homebound, it could include our alternative programming at the high school, our discovery program, students come in, in that as well. So for things that are longer than 10 days, we do have those options that are out there. And then we're required to provide for students with IEPs and 504s, if it's a part of their, their, even if it's not a part of their disability, they, they do receive those services. So I should have added that clarifying that for less than 10 days, it's usually that they're at home. But if it's more than 10 days consecutively, then we do have programming available.
Okay. And then is there like a reentry process for students to, when they have?
Yes, and what I would say is there is, but it is an area of focus this year that we're going to work on getting better at. There's a restorative reentry conference protocol that our SEL coaches are working on, that we're going to be working with our principals on. Because again, what we want to do is to, if you're suspended, we don't want it to happen again. And so how can we have a restorative reentry protocol that's in place? So our SEL coaches started that work last year. There are some different examples of that available, but we're going to keep building on that this year.
Gotcha. And then you mentioned restorative practices, you know, classroom management, the SEL coaches, those were some things. Do we do anything with trauma-informed training? Do our teachers receive any of that?
So our SEL coaches have done some of that work tied into almost all of our other pieces with restorative practices. The trauma-informed training is, is sometimes a little bit more difficult because it could look different based on the students that are out there. But I don't know that we're, we can do better in that area is what I should say.
So to Mr. Kathy's point, like if that is a resource that we need to provide, because I think a lot of times teachers don't understand when, you know, students are acting out a certain way. It's not a lot of times because they want to. It's something going on at home. It's, you know, something that they're going through. So if they can, it gives you a clearer lens to look at it and it could help decrease these numbers as well as maybe, I don't know, do you, trying to make sure I'm saying there, SEL curriculum? Because I know we speak about just those frequent flyers, or you mentioned looking at the first grade level, 10th grade level, once they're in 10th grade, and they still have those same repeat behaviors. But if we have this SEL curriculum that we're paying for and that we are using, how effective is it that, you know, just making sure that we, it is what we need and we're getting our students and our staff what they need to be successful?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I had. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Speaking of SEL curriculum, I just want to ensure that we, that this is a guaranteed curriculum, that every school, every grade level is.
The expectation K8 is that we have our second step in place. There hasn't been an available curriculum at the high school. There's a new version of second step for high school. What's interesting about it though, is that it focuses more on building-wide actions that you can take, like being at the door to greet students as a simple example, as opposed to lessons that you teach. But when we tie in things like our youth mental health first aid, which is somewhat connected to that, we're exploring what those high school options are. We piloted a program called Thrivaly in our discovery program. That's done very well, but we haven't taken that across the, the spectrum at the high school level. But K8 and pre-K actually, they have some of those available. The, the expectation is that they have those lessons. Those may come in different forms, like counselors may do that at the middle school versus classroom teachers at the elementary, but we do have those in place.
Yeah, it's pretty hard, difficult at the secondary level for SEO, I found that. But thank you for that. And then next up, 5.04, our family exit survey. Dr. Bailey?
All right. Economy of time with people standing up. So a few years ago, the board looked at doing an exit survey for our families that were leaving the Kirkwood School District. And so this is, I believe, the third one that we've done, but we were, the first year that we did it, we did anybody that we could capture that had left like the previous four, five or six years. And so what we've gotten into now is that anybody that's reporting on here is somebody that left during the school year or at the, after the end of the school year. So I'll show you that in a second. But it's only a one-year window, not multiple year windows like we've had in the past. I will say that these do get updated. So as this piece, you'll see that the student data includes anybody who transferred between August 15th, 2023 and July 1st, 2024, which could mean that someone left August 14th and never set a step, or sorry, August 16th, but never came into our building. But it could also mean that somebody left on May 25th and spent the entire year with us and then transferred after that. Basically, were they expected to be with us last school year? Were they with us and did they transfer out? Some trends that you'll see, the total number of transfers out is lower than in previous years. Our total enrollment is slightly down, but it's comparable to pre-COVID levels, which means that those transfers that are comparable is a lower number as well. And I do put the caveat that this data may change closer to the beginning of the school year because there's still several weeks left and somebody may make decisions or family issues may come up where someone has to move. So we do an update of this information in October with our yearly enrollment report. Some high level numbers that we look at, the transfer out, you can see the trend data is trending down. So a transfer out of state to a public school almost always means that somebody moved. And so they either moved for whatever reason it might be, but they moved out of Missouri into a different public school across the nation. It's there, you can see a very low number of 17, but it's trending from that before. We haven't had a huge number of students that do this across the state. Transfer to another public school in state usually means that they moved. I say usually because it could be that there were a staff member that's no longer a staff member and now their child has to go to a different school. What we don't count in here is we don't count intra-district transfers. So if somebody were supposed to go to Nifer and they went to North Kirkwood Middle, we don't count that because they're not leaving the district. But this is if somebody left Kirkwood for another public school in state. So this is that they moved through there. There, I'm, I'm looking forward to the year when this big number can roll off around COVID. But you can see the transfer to homeschool, it is not very common that we have somebody go to homeschool. You can see that our numbers are commensurate with previous years. We do have the occasional student who is, especially in kindergarten, what we've seen, a few parents that, if you think of when kindergarteners were born, it was right around 2018, 2019, 2020. And so something big was happening during that time. But we do have a few parents that have asked if they can do a partial, part-time enrollment. And what we asked is that they do a homeschool declaration along with their partial enrollment so that their total package of education equals what's considered full-time enrollment. Those students are not considered as a part of this number because they're not, they are somewhat still enrolled with us. But homeschool, you can see, is down. Other than that, year 2020, 21, we had 95. Most of those folks came back, but. We do look at this one more intensely than others, the transfer to private school in state, because typically this is somebody who stayed in the Kirkwood School District and made a choice to enroll in a private school while still living in Kirkwood. You can see that number is down. We'll go over this a little bit more in depth with the enrollment presentation in October, but typically when somebody is transferring out for a private school, it's when they're leaving fifth grade, going into middle school, or leaving eighth grade, going into high school. And there are several times when we do the family exit survey, when people will say, love Kirkwood, but every sibling has gone to CBC. And so we're, we had this planned forever. Or, you know, not that they're recruited for sports, but went somewhere for a specific sport or, or other reason. But transfer to private school number is down from previous years as well. And then just looking at our total transfers out. So this is anybody that went out of state, in-state, public school, private school, homeschool, whatever those transfers out may be. You can see that that number is down, lowest number since 2016, 2017. With the asterisk that that number may change by the time we do our October enrollment report, but at this point, it is our lowest number in, in quite some time and trending down in, in a good direction. We want people to come to Kirkwood, stay in Kirkwood, have a great experience in Kirkwood. This is just a reminder that our overall enrollment trend, just as these numbers have trended down since 2020, 2021, our enrollment has either remained the same or had a slight, you know, just a slight variation, but we haven't seen a significant decrease in overall enrollment, even though we may have seen some decreases in those transfers out. So one of the things that we do then is we send a survey out. Mr. Kathy, I appreciate your viewpoints on those because sometimes people just get them so much. But we send a survey out, we sent that out this year in mid-June to anybody that had transferred out for whatever reason. Sometimes I'll get something back like, whoa, we didn't leave. And it's because it was somebody, a brother who did something like was going somewhere for gifted only, for example, or was coming for music. So we are, we're going through, but if there's more than one email address listed, we send it to any of those that we have. Ask that they complete the survey. We didn't get a huge number, but this is no different than the previous years that we got. So the response rate's pretty commensurate. So what we ask is that they rate different, their satisfaction with different areas. And so there's a very dissatisfied, dissatisfied. There's a neutral, and then there's the opposite. And I'm, I'm happy to report that on almost every single indicator, everything is trending towards that satisfied, very satisfied area. There's one, and it's typical for us, and you'll see it on the next slide, special education. But in terms of academic programs, the majority of parents that responded had a satisfied or very satisfied response. In terms of special education, that neutral to me is indicative of their student didn't have special ed services or that they didn't respond regarding that. But even such, there were still programs that were available. I should have added this early. I do want to make sure that people know, the survey hasn't closed, it's still open. So if people still have the link, they can still fill that out, they can still complete it, we'll still report the data. they can still complete it, we'll still report the data. This was just gathered as of uh, the date uh, that we need to turn the, the presentation in. In terms of administration, we don't specify building level or district level. Some people do in their comments, they'll say one thing about the building and one thing about the district, but my guess is most people associate administration with their principals that they're dealing with at their building level, um, unless they tell us otherwise. So a generally positive response in terms of that. Our teachers who are amazing, I mentioned this earlier, get a great response, uh, very satisfied. Um, and many times when we ask, is there anything else you want us to know? The comments that, that parents will tell us is, mister or misses or doctor was tremendous, we love this teacher, we love the experience that we had. So our teachers um, do a terrific job. Extracurriculars, generally a positive response regarding extracurriculars. Um, so we don't want somebody leaving because we're not offering something. The board's been very supportive of expanding opportunities like STEM, robotics, um, and, and our esports, which is, you know, very popular at the high school already, just in its, its second year. So expanding those opportunities and making commitments for things like our fields and turf, um, you can see that the extracurriculars are not necessarily a reason people would be leaving. Communication, I think it was said before, everything comes back to communication. Communication with administrators um, is still skewing towards the positive, but you can see that that red is a little bit higher in this one than it is in others. Um, and so that piece is, is a struggle area. Communication with teachers, again, very strong when it comes to our parents in those reports. Discipline, to your question earlier, Ms. Andrews, discipline was still, again, skewing on that strong uh, side, very satisfied or satisfied, or, or neutral. Um, some were dissatisfied um, with how some discipline situations may have been handled, which ties into addressing your concerns. This really is the only one of all that we presented that would have something that skewed this high in terms of the very dissatisfied or dissatisfied, while still equal to the satisfied, very satisfied. It's still an area that we want to continue to look at on those, addressing those concerns. Um, and those, addressing it could look a variety of ways. It could be, I wanted some support for my child and I didn't get it, or it could be that the district as a whole didn't address or did address something in a way a parent wasn't happy with. And so addressing your concerns is our highest one, it's been our highest one in terms of the red bar the last couple of years. Safety and security, Mr. Scott sitting behind us there, rated very well. Um, we do have secure buildings, safe buildings. We continue to make enhancements and improvements with that, including our cameras, including our Raptor system, um, and, and safety is paramount, especially given just all the news that we tend to hear on a yearly basis about schools and struggles that are there. Our parents felt very good about safety and security. And so um, one of the things I do want to also add is it's not just Likert scales that are on there. We do add, ask three additional questions at the end of all the rating. Uh, the first one, how would you describe the Kirkwood School District to a friend or neighbor? And that's just an open question that they can write any comment that they want on there. Uh, the second question, please give us specific suggestions for how we can improve our school district. And parents again are able to put um, very specific things that are personal to them. Um, and then the last question, is there any additional information you want to share with us? Anything else that we want us to know? And one other area that I want to make the board aware of is we did have some parents who were interested in doing more than just submitting a survey. They want to look at potentially focus groups or ways to have more personal connection and communication with sharing and addressing concerns. So I do ask, you know, if you want, share your email with us, and then we'll reach back out to them um, when the school year gets going and previous years as well, and see if any of them want to come in and do some more dedicated focus groups or feedback opportunities uh, around taking a little bit deeper dive on a few questions that we can look at, because we always want to improve, we always want to grow and get better at what we're doing. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I'm looking at the time, I think we need to possibly um, need a motion and a second to extend the meeting for 15 minutes to 8:45.
So moved.
Second, Caffey.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Most should pass it. Right, Chad. Okay, I will start, yeah, Chad would not be here. To my left, Ms. Andrews, do you have any questions? Mr. Caffey.
Um, great trends, um. I'll keep my questions short, so um, the data's for, so I guess, walk me through, and I probably asked this exact same question.
That's alright.
A year ago. Um, eighth grader decides to go to private school, what's the mechanic that drives the number to the 40, right? Or anybody, I mean, other scenarios could apply to the total number, but specifically those.
Yeah.
Um, what if they don't proactively come to you and notify you that they're going to a private school? How does it get into that?
Great question. So this is pulled from those who we've already received notification that they're transferring, and so we, we plug that code into our system to either send the records to that school um, where the parent has reported, the parent has self-withdrawn. It's one reason why we do an update at the October, because at that point, pretty much everybody has made any final decisions or moves regarding that. But if for your, to your question, if we had an eighth grader who went to North Kirkwood Middle all of last school year and said, I'm going to go to Viani next year, um, if they went ahead and submitted their transfer paperwork or their transfer request and records requests that we received from Viani, uh, before this data was pulled, they would be captured in here. Um, if tomorrow Viani sent that records request, then we would get that update for our October report.
Yeah, so we, we feel confident that we capture all that. And I'll state that, and I probably speak for other board members, that I participate in frequent conversations about people that say that we have a significant number of kids transferring to private schools. I debate that highly at times. This helps my position with a few conversations that I'll take it to. So I just want to make sure that I feel confident in that, in that number that we eventually get it and this shows a significant downward trend.
So the state rules are that, you know, we can't really just drop a student until we get a request from another school to transfer them there. So there may be a student who's told us they're going to a private school, but until we get that records request, we keep them enrolled. So they would not show up on here yet, but that's why we do an update in October, because by that point, they've enrolled, they're at the new school, they have their schedule, and we'll capture that. So that 40 number could go up, um, but you'll see that it's, it's probably not going to go up a huge number by that point.
It's not going to triple, yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mottika.
Hepburn. Um, I, similar to Mr. Caffey, I've had a lot of conversations around this topic. When I look at all this information, really the only one that I kind of want to focus on is the transfer to private schools piece, um, just because of the level of concern that's been expressed to me about this. I do love seeing these trends, I think this is really telling. Um, for the reason of the types of conversations that I have, I would love to see this particular category broken down into grade.
Hmm.
Um, and I'm very open to criticism on this from the community or, or otherwise, but for me personally, it would be very, I would perceive it very differently if I see a kid transfer in third grade to a private school, or in seventh grade, or in 10th grade, versus some of those natural leaps that do are, you know, part of just a family tradition around. Yeah, exactly, um, so that would be really interesting, as well as any transfers that occur in the middle of a school year.
Hmm.
Um, I would love to see the more high-concern categories be, you know, that's five students, you know? Um, that would be helpful for me, and that's my only comment.
I have good news that in our, in our presentation that, that in October for enrollment, I do have a couple of slides that'll show at each grade level, the number that transferred out and the number that transferred in, because we do have some balance that happens in that respect. We do that breakdown, um, and, and there are some of those naturals between fifth and sixth, between eight and nine, but you're correct, that if somebody were to come for first and second grade here and transfer for third grade, that does raise a little bit of a, a red flag in terms of why and you want to dig a little deeper, so we will make sure we present that, yeah.
Ms. Pangborn, no, alright, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Bailey, I'm sorry, thank you. Put some respect. Dr. Butler. Alright, next up, 6.01, um, policy review, first reading.
And so um, the, we have the following policies that are presented for a first reading and review. They will be brought to the August 26th, 2024 Board Meeting for a Second Reading and Approval. They are Policies BDC about closed meetings, records, and votes. Policy DFI dash two, setting tuition for district programs. GB EBC, criminal background checks. IND, ceremonies and observances. JEC dash one, school admissions. JEC A dash two, eligibility to enroll. And JO dash one, student records. And as has been our practice, um, give these a read. I know Ms. Hepburn is fascinated about the bird celebration in um, the ceremonies and observances. And if you have any questions or adjustments, um, get those to Dr. Ulrich and to Ms. Shern. Thank you.
Thank you, alright, next up, 7.01, curriculum review, first reading.
That's just for the board's information?
Yes, but you were gonna.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Shern, we did talk about this uh, a little bit last week as we were preparing for today's meeting. Uh, I want to make sure that we take this opportunity to be as open and transparent as possible, specifically as it relates to our, our curriculum review process. Uh, Dr. Granna, who is not here, she's on vacation this week. Uh, Dr. Granna facilitated the most recent CRC meeting, I believe, Ms. Hepburn, you were able to uh, attend that, uh, to, to attend that. And you will see, and you may note, for the board and for our community, um, that we have a, a number of courses that are coming to the board um, in, and coming through our process, um, in a, what might appear to be a bit out of, uh, out of sequence from what we've done in the past. And so I want to take a little bit of time to summarize what has happened. The board has seen this information, but certainly want to say this for our community as well. Um, but as Dr. Granna is finishing her first year as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, one of the things that she has tasked herself in doing is to make sure uh, that she is taking a look at being able to catalog when uh, when our, all of our curriculum, over 200 courses, when all of that curriculum uh, was, uh, was approved. Uh, and in that work, what she discovered is that we had um, several courses, specifically extension courses at the middle school, um, that the word that I used with the Board of Education had strayed from their original intent. Uh, and as soon as Dr. Granna identified that, um, she brought it to me, I brought it to the Board of Education, and uh, as is what I like from my team and consistent from my team, they bring solutions with their problems. Um, and so part of that solution um, is this first reading uh, tonight. Uh, part of that solution was the CRC meeting uh, last week. Uh, so again, I want to make sure that we bring that to um, our community's attention and the board's attention here in a public meeting, um, to make sure that our community does have competence. Um, and specifically, when we do find something that isn't as it should be, um, we note it and we fix it. Uh, and so um, I can also say, it's also been communicated with the Board of Education um, that Dr. Granna has now completed a complete audit of all 230, about 230, I think, but definitely over 200 courses, has completed that audit work. Um, and we have identified a new category that has emerged, and that category is where we have um, courses that do in fact have curriculum, where we can't go back and find a one-to-one corresponding time when the Board of Education approved that. So we do have curriculum for those courses, however, we cannot find that one-to-one um, uh, approval that we really need to be able to show to, to, to lay that foundation. And so um, that will also be coming up here over the next couple of board meetings. The board and our community can expect to see that as well. Thank you, Ms. Shern.
So board, this is for information, and then when um, next week, well, I'm sorry, next board meeting, well, next work session, um, if we have any additional questions after looking at our uh, reading over it and having any questions, we will bring it then. Um, but then it will be presented for a second reading and approval at the August 26th, 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question that will just uh, help with preparing for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Dr. Ulrich had just mentioned that um, a new category was found, but that, that grouping, and I may have, my family's been sick, so I may have, have missed this, but that, that new grouping um, has curriculum um, already established. Um, so the, the other um, grouping does not have established curriculum?
That is correct, the first group that we're bringing this evening is to establish that curriculum, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and I think I can help answer, because I was at the, the curriculum meeting as well. I zoomed in, so you couldn't see me there. Um, there was, with, with the ones that we're seeing tonight, there was a curriculum, but it has, in the 10, 20 years since it was first approved, or since it was first developed, it has evolved, like the robotics course 15 years ago is going to be really different. So what Dr. Granna did, um, which I think was amazing, in the time that she had, Dr. Granna, Dr. Ulrich, and all the other teachers, they have taken the original curriculum and they have meshed it with what should be the standards we have now. So what might have been an ELA curriculum, it is now, it might now be fitting a different, some different standards, but they have, they have a curriculum that is now appropriate for today, as opposed to 15 years ago when it was first developed, and it has evolved.
Perfect, so yep, so I have to say, everybody just take a look and see if we have any questions and if we need to bring it to the um, work session. Alright, 7.02, future events, um, this week, July 22nd through August 1st. It is the second session of Summer Academy for Middle School, um, July 26th. The district offices are closed, I believe that's the last Summer Friday.
Summer Friday, yeah.
Get it in, guys, I'm sorry. August 1st, uh, elementary class assignments are, will be available to all parents at 9:00 AM. August 5th, there's a board work session. August 5th through 9th, new teacher orientation. August 12th, Teacher Work Day. Um, August 13th will be a district workshop, it's also opening day. August 14th through 16th, staff development days, there will be no school for students. August 19th, Teacher Work Day, no school for students. And then August 20th is the first day of school, that is. And then August 26th, we have our uh, Board Business Meeting. Alright, exactly, alright, so at this moment, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening.